Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Thank you so much for your time today. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So this is our first time meeting and you know, quite possibly the first time most of our listeners are going to be watching this. So can you please tell me a little bit about yourself and your big news that you have?
Yes. So my name is Sandra Christensen and I am an elected official in the Paradise Valley Unified School District. I am also a community member and business owner for Best Version Media. I run a publication in the Aviano Fireside area, which is in the Desert Ridge area. And so that's my daytime job, but I have some exciting news. I am filing to run for State House of Representatives in District Four.
Well, congratulations. Are you excited?
I'm very excited and I, I've been really thinking about this a while. I recently sold a home in North Scottsdale and I've been thinking about running for the legislature for over a year. But we were taking a wait and see attitude, my husband and I, because we had a home that we wanted to sell. We're empty nesters now. I am in my third year in the Paradise Valley Unified School District and I needed to live somewhere in my district. But at the same time, you know, I was still thinking of where am I going to end up? And so I was holding off to announce because I was in District Three, my home that I sold. And then once we sold, then we had to find a place to live. And I was looking at two, three or four, because the Paradise Valley School District is in Legislative District Two, Three, Four and Five. So it's 100 square miles. It's a very large district. It's one of the largest districts in the state. So it's been an amazing ride and I'm getting a lot of support already. And so I'm very, very excited about this announcement that's coming out.
So LD4, tell me, what area do you cover there?
Legislative District Four borders to the north, we have Legislative District Three, which is the largest district in our state. However, Four starts just north of the 101, that Desert Ridge area, Desert Ridge Marketplace. A lot of people know where the 51 and the 101 intersect. So it's north of that area and then it goes all the way down through Scottsdale, North Scottsdale, North Phoenix, and then the heart of Scottsdale to Paradise Valley. So it's, it's a very long district. But I'm, I already know a lot of the constituents in that district because coincidentally, Legislative District Four is my biggest area in the Paradise Valley Unified School District. So I already have a lot of supporters there. Many of the people, the precinct committeemen that live and work there helped me get onto the school board, helped me knock doors. They helped raise money for me. And so when I decided to do this, I got a lot of people very happy and anxious to, because I am considered the voice of the people in the Paradise Valley Unified School District. And that's what I want to be for LD4. I want to be their voice as well.
This is just so exciting and you have over 30 years of experience, like public service experience. Can you, how did you start? What was your start in all of this?
So I, I got a degree in, in, from New Mexico State in information technology. Now, it's funny because back then IT was COBOL programming, it was mainframes and you know, we had, it was after card readers, but it was still that mainframe area. So I came to Phoenix in 1994 after I graduated from New Mexico State. I became an IT project manager for Allied Signal Aerospace, our biggest, our biggest contract, which our biggest client, if you will, was Boeing, because I worked in the jet engines division. And so we developed systems, information technology systems for, for Boeing in manufacturing. And then I also supported HR systems. And then as I transitioned into that next wave of information technology, we started learning object oriented programming, which looking back now with going into the IT arena, it's just so funny how much things have changed in, in just under 30 years. Things have changed so much in technology and in my life, but that's how I got my start here. And that's when I first moved to Phoenix.
And so kids, tell me about, did you have kids and being involved in their lives over the years?
Yes. So I met my husband soon after I moved out here. He worked for Motorola. I worked for, which became Honeywell, it was Allied Signal Aerospace, but we, we took on the Honeywell branding when we merged. And we, we got married and we were married nearly almost 10 years or nine years before we, we got pregnant with my wonderful son. He was born in, in 2006. Ironically, I had decided to do a career change at that time. So I had, I always wanted to be a veterinarian. So I got into veterinary school and I got pregnant that same year. And so I made it through three years of my four-year doctorate and it was very difficult as a, as an older student and a mom. So I really embraced that time because, you know, I don't believe things happen by coincidence. And so what, having changed out of information technology and into a whole different arena, having that veterinary background, I learned a lot about humans. I learned a lot about health and wellness through the veterinary industry. Because at that time, I had a idea of what mental health and health was in the human realm. But at UC Davis, we treated the whole pet. So if somebody came in for a dog or a horse for a broken leg, we looked at the environment, we looked at what they were eating, what they're being, you know, exposed to in the environment. And so kind of expanded my horizons and gave me more knowledge in, in the, in the areas of health and wellness. And so fast forward, I, I, once I decided I was not going to finish my, my degree, because you know, it's hard to have a baby and go through one of the toughest programs in the, in the nation and in the world that UC Davis. I was blessed enough to be able to get a job in veterinary industry. So I managed a large hospital in central Phoenix for that. So it was a wonderful coupling of my business background and my veterinary background and my technology background, because I ran a very large hospital. We were open seven days a week. It was a hybrid emergency clinic and a regular GP hospital. So it was great, great exposure. My son was, was in going into, let's see, he was going into first grade when we moved back to Phoenix. When I left UC Davis, we stayed there a while, came back and, and it got to the point where I really had to make a decision as a mom. My son was getting bullied in school. And so I made a decision to take a step back. I started working part-time and then I, my husband was traveling a lot. So I decided to stay and support my son and his role. He was having a hard time in school. That's when I started getting involved in schools. So that was the 2015 timeframe. We had moved to the Paradise Valley School District at that time. And I, after I retired from VetMed, I started volunteering and that's when I started understanding all things education.
How long have you been on the school board?
I've been on the school board three years. The reason I ran for school board was because I had, I had been volunteering in the classroom and I loved the teachers, I loved the support, but I felt that we could do better. I always say on the board that I want to set the bar high for all our students. And I wasn't necessarily seeing that in public education. And I want to preface this with, I'm a product of public schools. My husband is a product of public schools. My son graduated from Horizon High School in the Paradise Valley. And so I love our public schools. And it's interesting, when somebody comes with a different background that maybe is not from education per se, asks a lot of questions coming from the business world, they are automatically targeted anti-public education, but nothing can be further from the truth. Growing up in New Mexico, my parents didn't have a college education. So I was first generation college student. They set the bar high for us. They told us to treat people with respect and work hard and you, that you will go far in life. And so I took that. My dad was a small business owner and he had the American dream. And he, he had his grocery store throughout our childhood years. I worked there since I was eight-year-old. So I have that strong work ethic and I have the heart for community because I volunteered in community and I, I worked with my dad for many years. So fast forward to where I'm at now, I joke with people that I, I often joke that I don't know what I want to be when I grow up because I have such a passion for community and working and helping small businesses as well as helping community. And now in government, I did work for Tom Horn's office for a year and a half. And so I'm a strong believer that, as I mentioned earlier, nothing happens by coincidence. Things happen for a reason. So being on the school board, working for the Department of Ed really has equipped me to understand education in our state, the triumphs and challenges, right? Not everything is perfect in our schools, but not everything is all bad either. We have some great educators. We have great people in education. But I think we've lost our way a bit because sometimes when you get out of the thing that you're supposed to be doing the most, which is my opinion, two things, when we send our kids to school, we want them to be educated, reading math, science, everything good, right? Education and, and we want our children to be safe. And so having said that, I, I think education sometimes gets out of their lane and they want to treat the whole child where I and a lot of people are really adamant about the child belongs to the parent. And in order for a child to do well in school, that child must be supported by both educators and parents. It can't be one or the other. So I've been in school board meetings prior to getting on the board where I've heard educators say, I have a master's degree. A parent can't tell me how to, what to teach or how to teach. And then I've had parents, I've heard them say, well, these are our children. You can't indoctrinate our children. And so somewhere in the middle of that is, is a sweet spot where we really have common goals. We want our kids to have a good education. We want them to have good wellbeing. But I'm under the opinion that the mental health part of it needs to stay with the parent. That, that needs to be directed because in our state, we have some of the strongest parental rights bills. So parents have the right to direct the education, upbringing, health and mental health of their own children. Schools are a big part of that because they spend a good majority of their day in schools, right? But when we get to the point where schools are doing medical care, dentals, mental health, and trying to fit in reading, writing, science, sports, drama, all of that, I think it gets too much. If you look at some of the statistics that are coming out of Arizona, unfortunately, we are dead last. We're dead last in the nation and it's, it's a travesty because Arizona is a technology hub and we are bringing in these wonderful companies. People are not wanting to educate their kids here. They're wanting to get private tutors. They're wanting to send them to private school. And we have the opportunity to make education, Centers of Educational Excellence, right? Centers of Educational Excellence, in my opinion, means we stay in our lane. We set the bar high for all the kids regardless of their socioeconomic background, regardless of their race, gender, their religious backgrounds, right? Those things are important and those, those are family and identity things. But in the grand scheme of things, we need to focus on what's important. Educating our kids, preparing them for what comes after college, whether that be the trades or, or, sorry, what comes after graduation, being the trades or college or being productive members of society.
So how did you decide to run for state office?
Well, lots of prayer and a lot of people encouraging me. I think they've, a lot of my supporters have seen how strong I've been on the school board. And several people have said, you can't get anything done on a school board if you're not in the majority. And I disagree with that. I've been able to work with others to, to ensure that a lot of things are better. For, let me give you an example. One of my things that I really believe is that the school districts need to be more transparent. And so there's, I will pull things out of what's called a consent agenda. A consent agenda is something that is approved when the agenda is adopted at the beginning of the meeting. It seems that many school districts are putting multimillion dollar things in the consent agenda. And that's not the intention of consent agenda should be something that is a no-brainer. Kind of like kids want to go on this field trip and, you know, we don't need to discuss it. We don't have to vote it. But when you're putting a $2.5 million remodel on, on something, even if it's the right thing to do, we owe it to the taxpayers to be transparent and to discuss those items because those, those are not our dollars we're spending. We're spending taxpayer dollars. And so, so that is, is very important. I, one of the things that I love about being on the board is being people's voice. And so having been equipped now, working at the Department of Ed, being the own budsman there for the department, I learned what people's, what the roles are of the school districts, what the roles are of the state and what the roles are of parents or guardians. And so having learned that, there's a lot of gray, there's a lot of gray in between. And so it's been, it's been very interesting to, to understand that because I think even people that have been on boards for several, several years don't have that knowledge. And I was very fortunate to have, having that business background and working for the state to understand laws, working with legislatures, I had the opportunity to work with the governor's office, the attorney general's office in that role and to understand how everything works within the education system.
What I'm hearing you say is that you have conservative values from hardworking, raising the bar for everybody, being fiscally responsible as a school board member. What other values do you have that makes you stand out from the rest or from your competitors?
Well, it, one of the things that I want people to understand is I have really thought about this a lot. And there are three main reasons why I feel I'm a great candidate to run for Legislative District Four State House. Number one, and you've heard me talk about this already, is my strong background in public education, understanding policy, understanding the role of government, understanding the role of the parent and how that all fits together. So strong on education. My second, being an entrepreneur, having been raised by a father that, that achieved the American dream. I want that. I want that for all Arizonans and for Legislative District Four. There's a lot of entrepreneurs. I work with many of the residents in the Desert Ridge community and, and the businesses. So going to business networking groups, what I'm hearing is we are struggling. A small and medium-sized business owners were struggling and we need, we need respite. We need help because taxes are killing us, the inflation, things of that nature. And so having my strong business background in technology, in business is a real big asset for that. And then third, having that background in veterinary medicine, interesting enough, really gave me a lot of insight and exposure to safety and wellness in the schools and in, in general for, for people. It's never good to mandate things. So when we were, when we were in the COVID hard times, when things were, were a little bit shut down, there were suggestions on mandates for vaccines, et cetera. I know that mandating things like that is, is never good. And, and I'm not against vaccines, but I'm for choice for people. And one size doesn't fit all in, in education, nor does one size fit all when it comes to health and wellness, because there's a lot of factors compounding that. So, so having those three pillars of strong education, having that business background and then also that safety and wellness aspect of just really supporting families, really supporting school safety in having SRO in every school, those are, those are my three in terms of my wise. And I just feel like I'm ready to serve and I want to be the voice of the people in Legislative District Four.
Where do you stand on some of the other issues? One of the big things I've been covering lately, photo radar and license plate readers and privacy. Where do you stand on those issues?
So I have very strong conservative values, but in terms of those types of issues, I feel like I lean a little more libertarian and let me explain that. I'm very much for privacy. So privacy in all areas of life. And I will talk about that in the schools in a little bit, but those photo radars, I've been looking into that issue and I believe that they are unconstitutional because of the way they're set up. I've been speaking to other, other elected officials. And while I do understand there is some revenue generating potentials for that, is it, is it right? Are they, are they tracking, you know? And I don't know the answers to this yet. These are some of the questions I'm, is there some tracking aspects of it? Should a police officer be there with a radar gun to determine if you are speeding or not? There's some constitutional things that I would really like answers to, but I am not a fan of photo radars. I'm not a fan of those, of cameras. I know driving through the town of Paradise Valley, they're all over the place. And so I would like to see those pulled down. I know, I believe the city of Avondale has voted those out. And so I would like to see that happen in, in District Four. And you mentioned some other things too in terms, what was the other?
Privacy.
Privacy. I want to talk about the privacy issue because there's some, there's some things in schools that are, that are private, that need to remain private. So we have very strong laws that protecting children and they should be. We have a FERPA laws and for, and I, and I forget what, what the acronym stands for, but it's, it's a, it's a federal law that protects children and, and protects privacy rights. As you know, we're a border state and I've seen things on X saying, we should not be paying for illegals. We shouldn't, we should out people. And in that sense, I'm, I disagree because we have to follow the law. We have their very strong privacy rights for children, right? And so we cannot ask a child what their immigration status is. When I say follow the line to, to the letter of the law. So in the state of Arizona, and I believe nationally too, if a child is 18 years or under, you have to educate them. And we can't ask anything private about their lives, including immigration status. So while I understand people are frustrated with paying for certain things with illegals, that is a non-negotiable because it's, it's state law, it's federal law. We have to educate them, right? Also, we can't out them because of the privacy laws. And so I think we have to come up with some solutions that are more humane. I am a Latina. I grew up in New Mexico and I have family on both sides of the border there. And while I believe following the law means closing down the border and making sure that people come here legally, right? That's, that's number one, follow that law. But for those that are already here and have been members of society for decades, right? And our children, we're educating them. I think we need to look at, at humane solutions there and not make quick snap judgments, especially when it comes to a child that came here under no fault of their own.
Uh, what are your thoughts on taxes here? Do you have any ideas, any thoughts? What do you see coming down the pipeline this next year?
Well, in addition to the education committee, I would love to be on the Ways and Means Committee, because I feel that through inflation and taxes, we, we are just taxing our small and medium-sized business owners as well as our taxpayers excessively. In the schools, we've got things called bonds and overrides. And it's interesting because districts like the Paradise Valley Unified that I represent, we are very wealthy in terms of the number of homes that are high value. And so we're, we've been able to pass lots, pass bonds and overrides every year. What does not make sense to me is, as you know, bonds are still taxpayer dollars, even though their voter approved, right? So I do agree on putting them out to the voters. But if you look at our expenditures in Paradise Valley, we've been increasing expenditures like this over time. Our enrollment is declining this way. Our achievement has remained flat and actually even dipped a little bit. So throwing money at a situation doesn't necessarily make it better. I think the tax, the taxes on bonds and overrides really needs to be looked at because it, it benefits certain districts and others. So Paradise Valley Unified, as I mentioned, is very tax-rich with terms of home values. Our neighbors to the north of us, Cave Creek Unified, hasn't passed a bond in, I want to say decades. And so for those that don't understand, bonds cannot go to teacher salary. Bonds are for buildings. Bonds are for things, right? They can pay for technology, buildings, maintenance, things like that. So Paradise Valley Unified have beautiful buildings, which is great, right? Because it, it, there is a draw with, with bringing in, into new people. If you have a nice shiny building. if you have a nice shiny building. But it gets to the point where you have to put dollars where it makes sense, dollars in the classroom. And the district often says that, well, we want to thank our taxpayers and they approved this. Well, they did not approve us to waste taxpayer dollars, right? Even though it's been approved, we are, we are putting money into a system that isn't necessarily putting dollars where they need to go. So I'm trying to say that as carefully as possible, as opposed to Cave Creek that I mentioned. Cave Creek can use possibly a bond or override to pass because from my constituents that I talked to in Cave Creek, there's some infrastructure issues that are, that are lacking there because they haven't. So I think there's, there needs to be some balance because certain wealthy districts can pass them and they can, they can spend. And then other districts really struggle. So there's not that, what people in education like to call equitable, equitable uh, choices there. Cause I, I don't think that that is necessarily fair. So I'm for lower taxes, lowering people's, putting more money in people's pockets all around. And that includes our, you know, the taxpayers that are being charged for those bonds and overrides.
I have just recently started following uh, your school district and, and watching what you've been doing on the board. And the one thing that I've noticed about you is you are not afraid to speak up and to share your thoughts and your opinions. Do you think that would carry over at the state level? How do you perceive you being able to work with other people, even people on the other side of the aisle?
That's a great question. When I first got on the board, I kind of went scorched earth and I got on there because I knew the people that, that helped me get elected were parents that were upset. And so I kind of took that energy into that at first. But then when I started working for the state, then I realized, well, you know, there's more people and these, these issues are a lot more complicated. So when I kind of took a step back and started reaching out to people that I didn't necessarily align with, I was able to gather more information and then it helped me understand it. Didn't necessarily change my position on being fiscally responsible or wanting to put academic achievement as the number one, as well as school safety. But I think it did help me understand the bigger picture better rather than just saying, oh, everything, we just need to burn it all down and start over, because that's not productive either. So somewhere in the middle, there's common ground and I think the extremes on either side tend to miss that. I think I'm very well-suited for Legislative District Four. I came from District Three, which is a much more conservative district where I lived before. But as I mentioned, the heart of my school district is in four. And so I do understand there's a lot, there's a lot of different demographic um concerns that, that I need to consider when I'm reaching out. Because I do want to ultimately be that voice. We are a constitutional republic. We're not kings and queens up there. We're, we're not a democracy, like so many people like to say, a direct democracy is majority rules. We represent the people that elected us. Whether or not they voted for us, we still represent them. So I think it's very important to have those conversations, even if you disagree with somebody and to, to take all of that into consideration when, when you're making a, a decision on how you're gonna vote.
And one more question. Arizona and our elections, big hot topic here for several years now. Where do you stand on Arizona elections and do you support any kind of reform?
Having been a precinct committeeman and being apolitical for so many years, I, I was not strong politically for many years. But now that I'm kind of on the inside looking out, I think we do need to take a look at some of the laws and procedures and how we roll things out. Coming from North Scottsdale where I lived, there's a lot of individuals were, that were my neighbors that were elderly. And so for them, I understand where I don't agree. I, I like to go vote in person and on election day. But there's people that still want to vote by mail, right? I don't think that we're there yet to do one-day-one vote. That would be amazing because we do have an election day, not an election season. But in, in Arizona, we do, in fact, do have an election season. So I think start making some common sense, common sense decisions on things we're enforcing. I think we could tighten up some of the election integrity type things, such as there was a lot of drop boxes that were not, they didn't have cameras on them during the COVID years. And so even if there was not um, any people doing harm to that, just the fact that there are doubts in people's minds that our elections have um integrity, you know, that they're true and honest. If, if there's doubts in people's minds, then there's always an opportunity to improve. So I think, I think we have a lot of room for an improvement and are we gonna get to one-day-one vote? I don't know, but, but I think we have a lot of room to improve things. And that's, that's where my concentration is gonna lie in terms of elections.
So when do you file? And what else would you say to the person who's watching? What would be your final words?
Well, I, I did actually filed a, a couple of weeks ago. But as you know, I did, so I, I have filed, but I haven't announced. So today I'm going to be announcing, which is uh, the, the twenty-fifth, right before Thanksgiving. Cause I'm very thankful for how I got here. And so I am going to be um, sending out notifications today. So I'm, I'm very excited about that. And, and my message to the people of District Four is that I want to, I want to be your voice. I want to hear your heart and I have a lot of different life experiences that got me to where I am today. And I want to ensure that I am not represent, I am not going to be there for the lobbyist, for the special interest groups, even other politicians. I want to be there for you. I want to be there for the voices and be that voice of the people. So that's, that's my message. And I hope people will sit down with me, ask me lots of questions because that's my heart is just to serve. I al- have always had a servant heart and I want to continue to serve in District Four. All right. Well, I appreciate your time today and, you know, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to, well, right. I'm, I, yeah, like I said, I don't know what I want to be when I grow up, but I know it's gonna be amazing. I like change, I like fun and I like being with people. So it's gonna be fun no, no matter where I end up.
Well, that's awesome. Well, thank you so much for your time. It was so nice to finally meet you.
Yes, yes.
All right. Well, have a good one.
All right. Thank you.